Yes. I would like, good evening, everyone. Happy almost back to school day. Like to call to order the committee of the whole meeting on Tuesday, August 13th, 2019, at 6:35 PM, and ask for a roll call.
Ms. Spidey?
Here.
Mr. Baron?
Here.
Mr. Eisen?
Here.
Mr. Martier?
Here.
And Dr. Moore?
Here. We will, I move to approve the minutes of June 18th, 2019. Ask for a second.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. And now we will proceed with our visitor comments and ask you to please limit your comments to matters within the jurisdiction of the committee of the whole meeting and that they be no longer than three minutes. And just a reminder that this section is not intended to be dialogue with the board. Do we have any visitor comments?
Sorry.
Yes, Fred Arkin.
That's 30 seconds, please.
There's not even a thing here, so you gotta count it. My name is Fred Arkin, and I reside at 221 North Kennelworth. The report regarding the long-term facilities plan update is very disappointing. After countless hours of dedicated work that our Imagine group along with Perkins and Will put in over 18 months, the fact that the administration is recommending option one, in which construction work would not start until 2021, is an affront to those dedicated volunteers. It seems as if the work of the Imagine process has been ignored. Many of the issues outlined in this memo have been addressed by the Imagine report. As a board member, when I was a board member, we approved the project. When we approved the project, it was with the understanding that timeline for the design process would allow for construction to commence in the spring of 2020, and the project completion would be about somewhere around January 2022. Pushing this timeline forward over 12 months is very problematic. It would ultimately result in considerable increase in costs for the entire project and future Imagine work. Looking at the vision memo, the attention to equity is a cornerstone. However, delaying this project will delay the implementation of equity initiatives. Project One is all about equity, creating comfortable spaces, safe and comfortable spaces where students can remain for extended periods of time, providing much-needed renovation to our team spaces, creating a student resource center, renovating 76 classrooms to accommodate a project-based student sector learning, installing an ADA-compliant elevator, and gender-neutral bathrooms. We heard loud and clear last year from the community the urgency to move forward on equity. Project One is critical, is a critical component of that equity work. This district must move forward with a great sense of urgency to make this project, make sure this project is on time, on budget, and provides the scope of work as passed by the board last December. I ask that this board hold the administration, our design professionals, and our construction managers' feet to the fire and get this project started next spring. Thank you.
Thank you.
That was all.
Is there anyone that did not sign up for public comments that would like to make one? And I will turn the agenda over to Dr. Goodaddicks.
I would like to adjust the agenda by pulling under Finance, Item A, Update to Capital Campaign, and Item F, Presentation of Contract with Hires for Prominent Years, and then move Item K, Update on Long-Term Facilities, to replace Item A. Moving forward, our first item is the Student Participation Report under instruction. Making this presentation is Susan Johnson, Director of Student Activities, and John Stelter, Athletic Director, along with support from Brad Johnson, Associate Superintendent. This item is in compliance with Strategic Plan Goal One, Transformed in Change.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I'm gonna start just very briefly here. Every year we bring this participation report to the board to give an update on participation rates for our student population in both extracurriculars and in athletics. And so what you'll find is similar in far as scope and depth from previous reports. We'll talk about that in a little overview in just a moment. But I also want to highlight that differently from other reports. We are concluding this report with a recommendation for a program evaluation that we will conduct our extracurricular and athletic participation throughout this coming year, so that we are prepared to make substantive recommendations for areas that need improvement or areas that simply need to be sustained as we move forward. And so that is our intermediate goal is to produce that, and long-term goal is to make those changes. So with that said, I'll turn over to Susan and John for a little bit of extra information.
All right. One of the things that, or a few of the things that we've noticed, just to kind of sum up this review alone, report, is that over the last several years, we've kind of had a remaining constant of about 78% for our student participation. Students, we've noticed that students that are enrolling in at least one activity have a higher GPA overall than students that do not. We've also noticed that we do not have a gap, a significant gap amongst our student population versus our population of students that are participating in activities. And then finally, we have this year shown an increased diversity amongst our students, or our staff members that are sponsoring activities.
As Greg mentioned, one of our recommendations is to do an overall and comprehensive analysis and program evaluation for the entire extracurricular program, really trying to take a look at some of our targeted needs, any challenges or barriers to increased participation that face our district. And you know, a few of the things that we started to talk about, and again, this is, we don't have a lot of meat on the bones as to exactly what this is going to look like just yet, but our hope is that this time next year, we would bring those recommendations forward and provide more information on what that evaluation looked like. But again, at present time, we're looking at some of our recruitment efforts, how we look at our incoming transition program, how we're recruiting incoming freshmen through that program. We're hoping to work with, we've already actually started to work with the new advisory committee on ways that we can bring the extracurricular program advisories as a way to provide more information to students on what our opportunities are. Those are a couple of the ideas that we're gonna start with, and again, we hope to bring back to you guys at this time next year, a more formal report.
Questions? Any questions?
I just have a basic one. I think maybe last year we heard it, maybe it was in the report, what the percentage is, the norm is nationally, or any other, just so we can put our numbers in perspective? Because I know we have 78% participation overall.
From the National Federation of High Schools, that average is hovering right around 64, 65% of participation nationally.
I had, yes, thank you for the report, and I think one of the questions that was asked through email had to do with the decline with our black students over, I guess, the last three years, and it's slow, but it's steady. And so I was hoping to hear some information about what that may be about. But also, we've talked about this, and I think it may be becoming the realm of, from the Forge request, standardizing the template for reports, because, you know, I don't know what to make of our GPA numbers, because they're not broken down by race or gender. So, and I know that that's something we have talked about in terms of racial equity lens, equity lens, the way we know how we're doing with that is to have the information broken down that way. So, the unweighted versus the weighted GPA for his participating versus those not, I don't know what's driving that, or if it is speaking to extracurriculars, have that impact for everyone, or only certain students. So that is certainly information that I think we need, and I would like to request that we have it this semester, if there is a need to plan to do an evaluation.
Yeah, that's information that we can definitely get and share with the board soon.
We need to just have this as the standard procedure, because this is a request I have every year. Any other questions?
The next item is the 2019-2020 Hiring Report for our New Hire Demographics. Coming forward to meet the presentation, this Assistant Superintendent Roxanne Sanders. This item is in compliance with Strategic Plan Goal Three, Board Goal One, and District Policy 5:170.
Good evening. Each year, we present to the board the results of the hiring season, the demographics of all, how our new hires. As you know, one of our strategic goals is to increase diversity of our workforce, so that it reflects the diversity of our students. And I am happy to report that we are on the right track for our teachers, faculty. The percentage of minorities this year increased to 42 of all teachers hired compared to 37.5 last year. Overall, percentage of minority hiring among all employee groups is 52 for now, but I just, I said it in my memo, and I want to emphasize that it's not the final number, because we're not quite done hiring. We have last-minute designation and a lot of, especially a lot of teacher assistance that will be presented to the board on the next Personnel Report, regular board meeting in August 27th. This percentage is going to change, so I think we'll be very close of overall percentage of minority hiring, as was last year, possibly even higher. And we compared to the overall demographics of our hire, our employees right now, that's a snapshot, and please understand that it changes with each new hire, but 38% of all our employees are minorities, and 25% of faculty numbers are minorities.
Could we also at some point get attrition numbers, so we can sort of see like what our net gain is over time? I think that would be useful to see if we're, how much have we been really making, because it's hard to tell otherwise.
Sarah Wall? I, for the faculty, and this could be in the August 22nd, is before the faculty, the minority faculty hires, what divisions they'll do, what stuff is being teaching.
Excellent. Any other questions?
No, thank you for providing the additional table. And if you could, anything we could do to provide that kind of context when we present new hires would be good, because I doubled your number with the numbers on. And I guess I'd say we have a ways to go, but I think we're making very progress.
Yeah, I'll just point out that 42%, if I'm reading this correctly, it's eight out of the 19 faculty hires are minority, five of whom are African-American, and it will take a while to boost the overall numbers to match the student demographics, just because of the overall number, but this might boost it by one percentage point, but that's progress. And so I think it's important to see this and to recognize it, but also to continue to strive. So, so thank you, this is encouraging.
Another question. Have we started using that new hiring tool that we had voted on, I think, in May?
So, we have the assessment now loaded in our applicant tracking system, and all administrators were trained on how to use the assessment and the structured interview. So we are all certified now, so we'll be fully prepared, we'll do monthly trainings to be fully prepared for any time for hiring next year.
Thank you, Roxanne.
Thank you. And we're now moving into the Finance section, and we're going to do the update on the long-term facilities plan. Making this presentation is Mike Kariosha, Chief Operations Officer, and Josh Zerniak from FGM Architects. This item is in compliance with Goal Six of Strategic Plan, and District Policy 2:170 and 4:150. Gentlemen?
Would you announce who's joining you?
Yes, I will.
And make sure you turn into your chair.
Okay, well, we have a number of guests, first, I'll begin the board. We've got two gentlemen here from FGM Architects. We have Josh Zerniak and Mike Denz, and we also have two folks here from Pepper Construction, Jay Ripstein, and Mike Loringer.
Yeah, Josh.
I'm saying Mike. Because my name's Mike. I know there's two of everything, so I kind of messed it up. Sorry, Josh. We have a rule that we have to have the same name, it keeps it simple and manageable. So, and these gentlemen, they may be called up at different points of the presentation to answer questions, okay? So, this is a follow-on to a number of conversations we've had with the board with respect to the Project One timeline and Project One plan. We are at a phase right, we're at a point right now where we're, we really have the experts come in. This evening, we're actually officially going to welcome our friends from, hopefully the board will approve the contract for the construction manager, and Pepper will be officially working for us. They've been very generous and been working with us even though we haven't really had signed a contract. And we've been working very closely to try to get to this point. This point is a place where we're ready, we've done enough work, we've done enough background work, that we're ready to propose several different options for phasing, and the phasing will determine the costs. So, this evening, specifically the contract with Pepper, which is coming later in the agenda, doesn't have any costs associated with it, because it's, we don't know which direction we're going in. So once we determine that, we'll come next month with what those costs would be, based upon the option we choose to go, the path we choose to go on with respect to phasing the project. So just to set the stage for that. What we're gonna talk about this evening is two options that we considered, and I will tell you that when, we've had several meetings with the board, we've gotten a couple of different messages. We really tried hard, I pushed the team, I'm the best involved for that, to try to make sure we really considered all the options, and we really, in fact, that we didn't put anything in front of this board that we didn't feel we could deliver. And both of these options that we're going to present this evening, we can do. So there's nothing here, you know, one, we have a preference of one over the other. We'll go through some of the pros and cons, but I want you to be clear, we can deliver either of these. We feel one is better than the other, we'll talk through that, but we can deliver either one. So I just want to be clear about that, okay? So I think what we're gonna do here, I'm gonna take us through, actually, I have two more computers up here. What we're gonna talk about, first of all, I wanted to set the stage, this is something that the Imagine team put together, it's a great vision, and we've adopted it as the vision for Project One. It really, it's the same vision, and it's really the idea of this facilities plan being something really to facilitate education of our students, and to make sure that we keep that in mind, students are really at the center of what we're trying to accomplish here, we don't recite it that. I think we heard Fred talk about it, we certainly agree, equity is critically important in this, and the process has to be very rigorous and has to be driven by our need, not what we want, it's what we need. So we kept that vision, and that's how we've been operating to date. The agenda for this evening, we're gonna talk about three things. We're gonna talk about the programming space utilization study that was conducted by FGM. We'll get into some of the challenges we're going to have with either option, continuing to run the operation of the school during construction. We're talking about a significant amount of work in a very condensed period of time. Either option is going to present us some challenges, one more than the other in some cases, they're trade-offs. So we'll talk a little bit about that, and then finally, we'll present the two options for the timeline, which should really, two options for how we would face this project. At this point, I think I'm turning over to you, Josh, is that correct?
That is.
Okay. Take it away.
Thank you. So, beginning with an update on where we stand with programming. So to date...
Wait, we can't hear you.
Yep, to date, we have completed, we have completed meetings with all the division heads. We have one remaining with the individuals who are responsible for the tutoring center. There's been a change in the person who was responsible for the tutoring center for the last year, and then someone new is coming into that position, so we're waiting for them to return. So that's the, that's the final meeting that we have with folks who are responsible for each and every component that makes up Project One. And I did want to say that of all of the division heads that we've met with so far, that we were, we have not seen this with other districts that we've worked with, but everyone that we met with seemed to all be on the same page relative to what the goals are for this project, and even some of the more difficult things, like teachers who currently have residing in one classroom throughout the day. Everyone came to that meeting understanding and even supporting this idea that as we increase utilization, Mike will speak to the space utilization study that we did, that everyone knows that that is going to happen, there may be some growing pains that come along with that, but we were surprised to witness that, because that is, that's not often, that we've, that we've worked with districts where everyone is rowing in the same direction. So, wanted to bring that forward, so that you are aware of that. And so, and so with that, Mike Denz is going to talk a little bit about the space utilization study that we did, why we did it, and the data that has come out from that study. Thanks, Josh. So, there's two primary reasons why we would do the space utilization study. Number one, it's so that the design team can understand how your current facility is scheduled and operates, and how each specific teaching space is scheduled throughout a day. And secondly, when we do the utilization study, we create a graphic set of plans, which is a tool for the district that could help them when they start to look at scheduling and increasing the efficiency of the spaces in the building. So, we started with, we took the master schedule from the spring semester last school year, and that gave us this snapshot of time, which you see there, averaged out to be 68.5% utilization for the entire facility. Well, what does 68.5% mean? For a high school, 80% is a recommended utilization for planning a building. And that you could find in ISB guidelines as well, 80% that recommendation. So specifically, to the number of teaching spaces you have at the PRF, that would be, if you were to schedule at 80%, you would have nine classrooms that could be repurposed for other things. But, in order to do that, to hit that 80%, that means, as Josh was talking about here, that all teachers would have to have an office space, and they would own a classroom where they would be teaching five of eight periods, because if that 80%, we need to be, we need to be scheduling classrooms for six out of eight periods, and some even beyond that, seven of eight, where we have study halls. So, what this means with the 80%, when you look at the overall enrollment and the maximum capacity of the building, you'd be able to support 3,760 students at that 80% efficiency. And looking last at the district enrollment projection studies that were done, 2021 is your highest year forthcoming, and that's 3,519, and then it's slightly declines every following three years. So, currently, we're looking at classroom distribution. Part of, part of increasing the efficiency is you want to consolidate all of the classrooms within a subject or division near each other, because now you have teachers, you don't want them to have to travel during a passive period from one end of the building to the other, it's not the most efficient. You want to bring those classrooms together, along with distributing the teacher office suites as well. And we should note that the reason that we dove into this and did that due diligence is, as we started to unpack the master plan, and specifically the components of Project One, some things were not adding up. At the end of Project One, there was an increase of 10 and 1/2 teaching stations for math, and then there was a decrease of six teaching stations for world languages, and a decrease of four teaching stations for history. So, we, as the master plan, specifically Project One, endeavor to, as Mike talked about, bring divisions together, so that teachers don't have to travel this far throughout the building, that we have to look at a redistribution of, if you look at the arrangement of the classrooms in Project One, that if we did nothing, if we didn't do this, and we took that at face value, we would have a situation where you would have, in some divisions, some departments, you would have far too many classrooms, and in others, you would have, you would have too few. And so you would have a situation where some divisions were operating at extremely low utilization, and then some divisions were operating above 100% utilization, which actually is almost, it's impossible. I mean, you can be, you can be at 100% utilization, but you don't want to be there, because it gives you no flexibility. So, so what we've already started looking at is a redistribution of all of the classrooms, and we're going to begin to share that with the district administration, and then, once we make sure that we haven't missed anything, we will share that with the board. The good news is, it looks like we can still achieve the goal of, part of one of the goals of Project One, which is bringing divisions together, so that it doesn't end up just being about classroom renovations, so that we hit both of those goals.
A question. In terms of the, I'm still trying to wrap my mind around the whole idea of our utilization currently.
Sure.
And what is the, I guess, average or typical?
Sure.
One question is, the fact that we are at 68.75%, is that because there are dedicated classrooms for teachers? So that means that we need the space but don't have access to it, or we don't need it in our current configuration?
In your, in your current configuration, you are operating... In your current configuration, you are operating in a way that works. Could you be more efficient? Yes, but there isn't a driver right now in the, to put it in, Project One, what happens during Project One and at the end of Project One is going to force the district to increase its utilization efficiency.
And I appreciate that. I'm just, like I said, trying to understand in terms of the rationale, you know, beyond this is what's typical, or this is better. But as we're explaining it to teachers, you know, why this makes sense.
Sure.
I would imagine that being able to explain what that utilization that we currently have, because there will be folks that say, well, it's working, so.
Yeah, no, that's a great point. I think maybe if I put it in these terms, the work that is, as part of Project One, classrooms are lost as part of that. And so that's one of the main reasons why we ducked into the space utilization study, was not only to see logistically if you have the swing space during construction, to look at those displaced classrooms, but then also to see how you're going to operate, or how you might be able to operate post-Project One. And this is good news, this is excellent news, that if we did the space utilization study pre-Project One, and you were already at an 80 to 85% utilization.
No way to go.
We would, yes.
Okay.
Yes.
Okay.
Does the dedicated classroom thing get in the way of the grouping?
Do you want it? Yeah, that's a good question. It's a chicken and the egg situation. So because you lose classrooms, because you lose teaching stations in Project One, you would not be able to, you would not be able to have the number of classrooms that are dead, that have only one teacher in them throughout the day. Is that?
Was that your question?
No.
Yeah.
Good question.
So, yeah, I want to make sure I.
We're trying to come up with a final utilization of space that has groupings by subject. And you said earlier in your comments, to get there, you needed to get rid of the dedicated classrooms, which can go to offices, because I heard that as the dedicated classes are getting in the way of actually accomplishing the grouping, because of their location and who's there and what to teach.
So it's the reality, I mean, the math just goes like this. You have a teacher in a room teaching five periods, three periods a day, that classroom's not big enough. So the reality is, in order to not have to go out for swing space and get the utilization up, you've got to eliminate those situations so that classroom can be scheduled more, or that way it's covered. So I guess that's a guess.
Yeah, and it's driven by the loss of teaching stations in Project One. Yeah, that's the, if there was a way to deliver all of the new program, that's identified in Project One without losing teaching stations, you could stay at your current utilization. And it's also important to note, too, that the 68.5% average utilization for that snapshot of time, looking at the spring semester of last school year, that is taking the average of all, what we did, the study breaks it down. We have every single division and the utilization. So you have one like science, which is above, slightly above 88% utilization. So that's also another good thing, is that you have a whole division already that lives with, no teacher gets a room for the entire day. So you already have that model in your building.
Where else do we have, what other divisions do we have that model?
That's.
It's kind of a, it's a mix. There's certain divisions that are, it's really, some teachers own the classroom, and some have dedicated office space elsewhere.
But you're saying that science.
Science, science or no teacher all the time.
Yeah. Well, there is one, but it's such a specialty space.
Oh, I know what you're saying.
It's such a specialty space that, and that's actually, with that one, out of all of the other science classrooms, that's what then breaks it down, or drops it down to 88% utilization.
So it sounds like we have a model of the goal we're trying to attain. I'm just thinking of how we are messaging this as well as explaining it, that from an equity standpoint, you know, I know that, you know, certain students have never had a class on the Hemleyway classroom, because it's a certain teacher, it's so weird to hear, oh, it's that classroom. But I guess that is what it is. So that moving away from that system will allow for more fluidity in terms of access to all of the spaces for our students.
Yes, and access to, for the students, access to the teachers outside of their classroom, with that particular teacher, in locating, in the effort of locating the teacher desk in a shared office relative to the division that they're working in.
I have a question. So how, if you know, I'm just curious about our faculty culture. Is it the more senior teachers that tend to have their own dedicated classroom slash office? Or, because I think there's an equity issue among our faculty as well, right? Is that how that breaks down how systems work?
That is our understanding.
Okay.
Yes. Do you like to be covered all of your points?
Yeah.
How do I cover it? So.
Absolutely.
So some other considerations that we're working on, and creating logistics plans to make sure that we address these things and have a plan before any construction is started. Some of the items, some of these items are on this particular slide. So the first is creating swing space for these first classrooms. And that actually goes back to something made with the space utilization study. It's excellent news that you have that space in your building now. And we should also say that while the space utilization study reports good or excellent news, we don't want to give the impression that those responsible for doing the schedule have an easy job. We.
Would never.
Yes, as a matter of fact, the, all of the space utilization study data that we have, in addition to these plans that Mike referred to, we are providing that to the district, and we're going to meet with the individuals who are responsible for scheduling, so that we can, we can in great detail provide and share that information with them. And then we will always be here if any questions they have. If something doesn't make sense, we will be here to answer those questions to help them along the way. Because we certainly don't want to give the impression that from a scheduling perspective, that this is a slam dunk, because it's certainly, it's going to be, it's going to be a new world for the district, operating at a higher utilization or efficiency. So the other piece is, as you can imagine, when the south cafeteria is demolished, to make way for the new south cafeteria and student resource center above, we have to find a place for the underclassmen. And so we've already been working on ideas and plans with administration on where to land the displacement of the classmen for the south cafeteria. Also, there's outside use of the building that we have to manage and contend with. And so an example of that is the annual book sale. That also happens to be located in and around the south caf. Some things that, as we began to take a deep dive into the master plan and particularly Project One, we were looking at some things like the school refusal program, Latin Room, which is room 339, driver's ed, and then the mailroom and duplicating room, to name a few. Some of these things, we needed to gain a better understanding of how ultimately those were going to work with the idea. And driver's ed is a good example. At the end of the master plan, driver's ed is shown located at the north end of the building. But it appears as though, and I should say, driver's ed is displaced by the construction of the student resource center above the south caf. And so what we're looking at is to find driver's ed a home that really ends up being a permanent home instead of the district paying to move driver's ed twice, if you will. So moving on to the timeline and phasing, sequencing options. Option one is the timeline that was presented to the board in April. And option two represents a timeline to begin work, and this just so happens to begin work on the south cafeteria and student resource center in June of 2020. So moving back, and we'll kind of go into a little bit greater level of detail here with option one. So option one, the demolition on the south cafeteria would begin in February of 2021, followed by then work that summer on the first part of the special education program, the main entrance, and the student commons. So by the end of the summer of 2021, the first part of the special education program, which is immediately adjacent to the main entrance, and the main entrance and the student commons would be complete. Whereas in the south cafeteria, the demolition beginning in February of 2021, that's a 12 to 14 month construction duration, which would stretch into 2022. And then finally, you would have additional work occurring in the summer of 2022, which would be classroom renovations. The first part is 76 total classrooms that are to be renovated. The second part of classroom renovations would be done in the summer of 2023. And then also, in the summer of 2023, would be the second part of the special education. And the reason that has to be split up in either option is that the second part of special education is directly below us. And there's two biology classrooms that are getting displaced. So we have to build those spaces in what is now the existing maker space before, and so that those students can land there before then we move on to the second part of special education, of the program for special education. So the, really, that's, between option one and option two, the big difference is the start of the south cafeteria and the student resource center.
But also, the special ed is spread over two years as opposed to back to back?
Yes.
Within, so within the plan, between option one and option two, is it more about the difference, is there a difference in sort of compressing timelines for any particular work? Or is it about coordination of work and the staging of it that drives the differences between the plans?
There's a number of differences when it comes to that, but yes. So there is a compression with option two. And so option one does afford more time and a better spread of the work to have less of an impact on school operations specifically during.
Pros and cons.
Yeah, absolutely.
Before we move on to pros and cons, is everyone clear about the differences between this? Just in terms of what happens when? Anyone not clear? Okay, so let's move to pros and cons.
Yeah, and I should quickly, I'll be remiss if I didn't say that we, this is looking at both options at kind of a 60,000-foot level. What we didn't do to muddy the waters was overlay the $5 million dollars worth of health and safety work that would be occurring during all of this, and the nearly $14 million worth of capital improvements that would be folded into all of this as well. And that's where the further complexity comes in, and where option one provides for more time to do that, which then has less of an impact on school operations.
And just to be clear, so the $14.5 million in summer work, which would normally be summer work, is three years' worth of that work? Is that roughly correct?
Four.
Four years' worth of that work, okay.
Compressed, compressed in either, into three summers in option one, or compressed into two summers in option two.
Okay, so why is it, why the compression of that, of those four years' worth of work?
So the board asked us to look at any efficiencies that might be gained by packaging all of Project One, health, life, safety, and the four years of capital improvements together. And so that's, in the development of those options, we're doing that because the district saves on, by not having something extended to another year at a minimum. You save on cost supervision related to your construction manager. For you, you potentially save on a little bit of construction cost and further, you know, further movement in the future.
So basically, in the way I'm thinking about it, just to repeat it, which is, because we have construction manager here, because we have lay-down yard here, because we have logistics here, our indirects would be lower if we did this work more quickly and compressed in summer work?
Yes.
That's basically it, okay.
And then balanced, and then balanced against the very challenging part of the nearly 1,300 students that you have in summer school, and trying to present an option to you that doesn't affect that as much as the other option, which compresses it even further. And I think there's something too to be said here, that as you can imagine, we can look at an infinite number of schedule phasing options. And so it's certainly, in looking at this, you can say, well, why not go with, let's go with option two, and have some of the work still go to summer of 2023? And that's absolutely an option. I mean, there is a hybrid of the two, is something that could maybe become the best of both worlds, if that makes sense.
And sorry, just within this summer work that we've pulled from port two, we're comfortable from a building operations perspective of that work being done over four? Is that correct? We're pulling it forward for efficiencies of cost and indirect reasons?
Yeah.
Not because there's some maintenance thing that has to be done?
Yeah, there is another great benefit too, wherein by looking at all these things together, it avoids us ever going back into an area that was recently renovated, which we would, we could never bring that, we would have a hard time showing up here and presenting to you if they ever came to that, because it's irresponsible with the tax payer's dollars, an irresponsibility, so.
It looks fair.
Absolutely. Yeah, yes.
All right, so, okay, thank you.
So we, certainly, I feel like we provided an overview here, but to get into more specifics about the considerations and impacts between option one and option two. Option one, there's a great benefit in providing more time to make decisions and consider input and feedback from all the stakeholders. And we know that that was done during the master plan process, but it's a different thing once we do design. So. So while we are responsible for honoring and validating the work that was done as part of the Masca Plan, the Masca Plan does not get into detailed design, which we're now beginning. And so it's our understanding that OPRF has always respected the input from various stakeholder groups, or all stakeholder groups for that matter. And so what option one does is it allows the district more time to engage those groups to make sure that they're being heard, and that we're able to make modifications in the design if necessary. The other, the other benefit with the option one schedule is that there is, there is time to absorb delays. And delays could come in the form of any number of things. There could be delays caused by something that a permitting authority brings it forward. And there could be something, there could be a delay that is brought forward, because as we do the budget validation, which is actually the next piece that we're planning to bring forward to the board, there could be an issue with the budget that we have to reconcile. So the option one schedule already has time built into it to handle delays, whereas option two, it's faster paced, it's more aggressive. And that's not to say that that's bad, but it does force decisions to be made more quickly. And if we, if we don't get something right, then there is no going back to change that. The other piece too is that with option two, there's, there is greater risk to the district in that if we move forward with a large component like the South Cafeteria and Student Resource Center, and all of the contractor works have been let and construction has started on that, and as we do the final level of estimating on the rest of the components, then we are only left with those components to do value engineering, or what we refer to as budget alignment, right? So, so there's, there is no, there is no perfect approach. And I think that's, that's why that we're here today to presenting both options. And ultimately, like I said, the answer could be, while our recommendation is option one, because it produces risk to the district, gives the district more time to make decisions, ultimately, the decision, the path forward could be to say, let's do a hybrid between both of those options, so that construction begins in June of next year on the South Cafeteria. Because it is not lost on us how important that is to the community and all of the people who spent so much time working on the Masca Plan particularly.
Yeah, one question. So I want to unpack something that you said around engaging groups to be heard. Give me an example. And give me, give me an example of what you mean in this particular case. I'm trying to understand if, honestly, have we already allowed that time? And are we creating a luxury?
Sure. So this goes back to the point that I was trying to make relative to engaging stakeholders during master planning, where it's this discussion of ideas and looking at block diagrams, maybe on a floor plan, and then during design, actually showing them what the space may look like, which is certainly, it's much different than just talking about something and using words, where now we have the visual tool to aid in that conversation. And so often what we'll do is we'll recommend that a community forum or a town hall be held, and it can just be one time, or it can be twice at various points during, during the design, so that we get that feedback from the, from various stakeholder groups. Along the way, we would be meeting with the division heads, faculty, and students if we can, to give their feedback on particular areas like the specific classrooms and things like that, so.
I have a follow up question. Are you saying that you wouldn't do that? I mean, there's still design work that's happening.
Yes.
And what would prevent getting input, say, having a town hall, or if we went with option two, what prevents getting feedback on the design?
There's less, there's less how to do it, so.
But it still happens.
It could, absolutely, it could still happen. The benefit, or the difference between the two is in option one, when we did those things, if we did something like a town hall, we could have everything on the table. Whereas if we do option two, it would be limited to the components as we're moving through and when they're running, particularly the South Cafeteria and Student Resource Center.
Okay, I have a, I'm sorry, just, I'm trying to remember, you can imagine town halls and all, I'm trying to remember in terms of a timeline. But my, you might, please correct me if I'm wrong, but my understanding is that when we got to the point of hiring our design team, it was with the information of the desire to start in June of 2020. Is that fair or not?
No, we never put that as a constraint. We never had a specific constraint of the time. The scope was locked, and the information was shared with respect to what had been stated by the Imagine team, but that was not a constraining factor.
I don't mean constraining, but that was, as the, the subject, that that was the anticipation?
Correct, and that was, that was, the premise of that was when the project would start.
Right.
And basically, we slipped past that by virtue of the time it took us really just to get these folks hired and onboard. So, but yes, you're, we, the information was there, but there was never, it was never committed that before we asked you to come onboard, you have to commit to this, so.
And I'm not trying to imply that, I'm trying to suggest that, you know, in terms of understanding of, we're taking on this job, and the expectation from all of the materials we have is that June 2020. So the time, you're saying that the, the time it took to hire these folks prevented us from?
It was a factor. I hesitate to say that that was the only factor. The concern, the concern I had, the concern I had from the onset, I've only been part of this project, I was a part from the very beginning, from the time I was involved in this project. Part of the concern I had is there was a level of conversation, a level of detail, and there was, it was a, commitments were being made based on the information that was present at the time. Getting another party, set of parties involved in the conversation, we had to basically go back, and I don't say we went over the same realm. We met with the Imagine folks, we did everything short of meeting with the other architect, we met with the architects, but we didn't have the architects meet together. So we did everything we could to assure a smooth transition from one group to the next.
Is there someone on our staff that has, he said you came on later, so who was, who's been there the whole time?
There's been, well, on the construction side, really, there hasn't really been anyone that was actively engaged from the beginning to the end. And the detailed level, so I mean, there were folks involved, but not at the, at the level of engagement that, I don't want to be, I don't want to be second guessing the way things happened. But when, when I came onboard, as I said, commitments were being made on the basis of certain things, which were assumptions made, and some of the, most of those assumptions were true, but some of those assumptions turned out to be now true, because they just didn't have the information. So the process was what the process was.
So if I might interject, and I'm trying to hear both of you, the question was, when the recommendation was made, the recommendation from Imagine was for 2020. However, it was not until the board approved the work that we could begin to engage firm for design. And so that's, if I'm hearing, that's when you came onboard, when, once the board approved going forward with the project. So that's the discrepancy when, and I think what Dr. Lawrence is asking is, who was on the committee providing information?
I'm just looking for the historical knowledge, so that, you know, because you started behind in a lot of regards, and having to catch up, but also seeing some of the, I don't want to call it missteps, but seeing some things that could have happened, it didn't, or however it was laid out. I'm just trying to understand how we, if that, even if that is the case, we're here now talking about something that feels like we're caught off. I feel a little caught off guard with how we moved forward with being provided information along the way, and what you're stating now, knowing that prior to this may have made this real different, if that makes sense, this information real different. That there was a gap with the hiring, and that's why things got pushed back, because none of that is communicated.
I do want to also say what I've heard today, and what I see here is, there's technically 2.5 options. I said 0.5, because there's a hybrid option, correct?
Yes.
There's option two, and option two is breaking ground in 2020, and option one is breaking ground February 2021. So it's not to say it can't happen, it's right.
Yeah, I believe my, at the beginning, said, we're presenting two options that the design and construction team and administration that we've been working with, we can deliver either.
And I appreciate that. I'm trying to understand why the preferred is option one, and some of the information I'm hearing this evening that heretofore was not made available to the board, makes that make a little bit more sense to me, because the, the way that this is, the way it's presented, even when you were saying, you know, some of the things about option two, and I think you were implying that they were, you know, negative, so I was saying, oh, that sounds good, you know, we got to get going.
Sure.
And, you know, having construction span over a, you know, a student's entire school career here seems really arduous to me, that as opposed to, you know, having impact that isn't as, as great. But that doesn't, you know, delight the notion that we do have to have the information, and, you know, whatever it is, there's going to be a contingency, because, you know, you may be looking, I'll give a personal example, you may be, they have a scope in the pipe in the basement, and suddenly they hit a T, and who knew there was a T? That's not even heard of, but the house was built in 1887, so that's what you got. So I'm just saying, whatever option we pick, of course, there's going to be building in time and contingencies, so I'm hoping that those types of things are being, you know, that that's a process that happens along the way, even in terms of, you know, summer school displacement, that we're already thinking about what that looks like. Whether it's June, this, I mean, you know, always with the I2, we need to have the information sooner rather than later.
So if I could summarize, I know there's a lot more detail here, but if I could really summarize for me, the distinction is really just a matter of risk. And it's a matter of how tightly do you want to box yourself in to be aggressive, to use spreads term, holding our feet to the fire. In the business I've always been in, you try to minimize risk. Now, that doesn't mean that in certain cases, based upon what you're trying to get from an outcome perspective, that you're willing to accept the risk in order to be able to achieve the outcomes you want to achieve. So really, we're trying to balance in, in terms of the perspective of the people who do this work, have understood this work, and again, I facilitate, we work together to facilitate the conversation, is really how much risk are you comfortable taking? Now, I'm very conservative, I'm more comfortable taking the situation where we have more time, we're built into the schedules, if there's that bump in the road, you hit the T, you've got time to recover. So the more you condense it, the more, the more activity you have in the building at any given point in time, an operational point, it's going to be tough to operate this school in either scenario.
Right.
There's no question about that. The option, so whether it's option one or two, a compressed timeframe with more activity in more of the building in a short period of time, it's going to be much more difficult to accommodate things the way we usually do them than it is, than it would be in more, I don't want to call it relaxed, but in a less, a less compressed schedule. So really, that's what you're looking at, and I'm helping with this. I know we're starting in terms of breaking ground, one of the things that I want to mention, you haven't mentioned it specifically, is, is winter conditions. So by virtue of breaking ground in June, you're achieving a goal of breaking ground in June. And what you have to do then is you have to prepare whatever construction you do for the winter conditions, and that's, that's an additional expense. So you're moving that portion of the project forward, but on the back end, what are we talking about, three months difference in terms of end time, an additional summer?
For the South Cafeteria and Student Resource Center?
Yes. I shouldn't have held you to that.
Twelve months at the end, is what I see here, of substantial completion?
For the, for the total, for all of the work. But you're asking just for the South Caf and Student Resource Center, so there's an additional summer? The difference between the two? No.
No?
Because it's either, either take two summers.
No, no, but I'm saying in terms of end, the endpoint of that, I'm going to withdraw on what I'm saying, because I'm getting looks from him like they don't know what you're talking about.
No, no, I hope that's not, I hope you weren't taking that look, because that's not what I, I thought it. No, there is, there is, there is more time. So from groundbreaking to substantial completion, there is more, there's more time, but, but not, not three months. Does that answer?
No.
Okay.
I'm lost.
Okay.
Sarah.
Sarah. So I have, I think it works, it never works. Oh, wait, it does. Just the light never goes on, okay. Who is going to be undertaking this stakeholder engagement process? I mean, is that something that you guys do, or is that something that we do internally? It sounds expensive, and I'm just wondering how much that would add on if we did like a year of community engagement, stakeholder engagement?
Sure, but first, it would not be, it would not add on to the, to the schedules that we're presenting to you, it's building to that. And it also would be no additional cost to the district from your architect and engineering team that you've already engaged for, for the project. So this is something that we, if, if a district wants to do something like that, we help that process and even help the district organize it, and we're there, and something like a community forum, we will have multiple stations set up in a larger assembly space, and so that you can have groups move around and ask, they can have almost one on one time with a number of members from our team that we bring in. So that's, that's.
My math was be careful when you wish for, you have a lot of one on one.
Yeah, so we, we, some could say that we're gluttons for punishment, if it's outside looking in, but this is what we, we love to do, that's, it's, it's part of the process. And so if.
So the district will be responsible for planning?
Yes, from a, from a perspective of getting the, getting the, selecting the date, getting the word out, but.
It'd be a board sponsor, town hall.
I, I, I get that, I'm just, I just.
Those aren't magic, that's not magic.
I was just, right. I was just clarifying for various reasons. There's a lot of town halls being planned, so I'm just trying to give clarification of who's planning.
I have just two other sort of comments. One comment is, I'm still sort of confused about this idea of, if we take more time, it will go faster, which is sort of what I'm hearing you say, and that doesn't make that sense to me. And then if we have the luxury of time, somehow we will, I guess, avert expensive detours and timely detours, but it seems to me that if we start earlier and we hit those detours, we might still end up, you know, at the end of option, same timeline as option one, we just, but we started earlier, right? Whereas option one makes it an additional year based upon, you know, delays of whatever sort. So that's why I'm not really understanding why it seemed, what I'm here, what I'm understanding is that it would be somehow faster and more efficient to do option one?
Well, two different things, and I apologize if you got the impression that you said, please take longer or go faster. take longer or go faster.
Yeah, I mean, it seems to me I get this, longer to start, but somehow that makes it more efficient, but I'm not really understanding that because it seems to me that the delays are going to be the delays regardless.
Totally, but, but what happens is as you lock in certain portions of it and design those out separately, whatever's locked in is locked in and your ability now to change, first trying to design the whole thing, there's a greater risk of, of change orders in the sense of you build, you design the first part, you start building the first part, right? And then you start designing the other parts of it, you mess up and the first part of something comes up, you don't have to react to that. You'd always have to react, but the cost of reacting, if, to the extent you can plan it out ahead of time and catch more things ahead of time, it's going to be cheaper. To the extent you, you do it in pieces, you now have to integrate those pieces. And once a piece is locked in, from two perspectives, one perspective is scope, the second perspective is budget, to the point that Josh made earlier, let's just say we, I don't know, I'm going to make up some numbers, you spend a third of the cost on the first year of the project and you go down later and maybe you think, well, maybe I wouldn't have spent that much later because I'm running out of money at the tail end of it. So just in terms of being fiscally responsible, I mean, that can happen anyway, but there's a greater chance when you don't look at the whole picture and you break it into pieces to design and implement. That's what we're saying. In terms of speed and so forth, I think it's really a matter of the compression factor that's causing some concern in terms of the running of the school, especially during that summer construction, the amount of, the amount of space within the building that's being impacted at any given point in time. I mean, it's, it's a lot to try to push into a smaller number of years. That's, that's part of the concern and that's part of the extending it, right? And to me, that's where the risk comes in, as you extend it, if there's a bump in the road, you have time, it's not like there's a bump in the road and you've got five things that you have to stop to fix the bottom. So maybe there's only three things you have to stop and the more, I'll call it relaxed, the less compressed schedule, does that make sense?
Sure.
Conceptually, anyway.
I don't really have any questions, comments, but I mean, I guess if this is the time, just, I just feel like you said at the front end that either way, either option, we can do it. And so my feeling, based on having been on the liaison with Fred Arkham to the Imagine Group, knowing that it was 24 months ago in this room that they first met, knowing that that was a real process that took eight months and here we are, time, when we say that, we all agree that this is urgent, but that means reckless, right? We're not talking about reckless, there was urgency, there's a price that we're going to pay one way or the other, many ways or the other. And so to me, a very important thing to have heard is that you said that either one can be done and that there's maybe a way of doing hybrid to minimize maybe some of the downside of option two. I can't say in strong enough terms how much in support of option two that I am. You know, we're just second what Fred said tonight, just the momentum and from a community standpoint, and I respect and appreciate all the concerns that you're laying out so that we're going with eyes open if we do choose option two as our consensus, I don't know what it will be, but I just feel like that it's just, you know, all these details are fine and important to know, but the bigger picture, the big picture here, nothing has moved me off of your opening remarks, Mike, which I appreciate. And so, so that is just some of my initial, maybe my only comments I would make. Thank you.
So I just have one question, make a comment as well. I guess we're kind of wrapping up. I know you had your last slide.
I'm happy to wrap up, no problem.
Between option one and option two, I understand about breaking the work into packages, but are you phasing the design work? Meaning will you be doing all of the design work for option one or option two sort of before we go out to bid? So if I'm thinking, and I'm thinking of this in sort of a front-end loading kind of terms, are we front-end loading the project either way? Or are we shortcutting ourselves in option two by doing design, starting project, doing design?
That's, that's how option two would have to proceed.
So there's a, there's a risk, there's a design risk.
Yep.
In not having designed it all together. Is that correct?
Yeah, because of the complexity of all the building systems and overlaying the, not only the project one work, but the four years of capital improvements and the nearly, you know, four and a half million dollars of health and safety work.
Okay, so that's one of the fundamental risks between the two of them, that option two has that risk.
And, and option one decreases it, but doesn't, but doesn't, you know, you know, nothing is eliminated, it's about.
Understand. So, no, just to comment and summarize a little, Chuck, because I've been talking a lot tonight. There are a lot of risks which you, which we know, which you're trying to design out by using the process to do. And I completely respect your recommendation around trying to do that. But what I'm, what worries me actually more are the risks that we don't know and the more we delay, the more of the risks we don't know push us further back, meaning that we don't find them out till later. Or we have a risk around community momentum, the risks outside of those things that we know are actually substantial here and that's momentum. So, and I also have a bias, which is I kind of, I kind of disagree and I'm trying to push myself not to be like that, but I kind of disagree with, with a, with a point that says, you know, there's greater benefit in allowing extra time. I actually don't agree with that. I don't believe that there's greater benefit in allowing extra time in the execution of a project because I think your decision-making just expands to fulfill the time that you have and being more disciplined about it is a little bit more efficient, more risky, but a little bit more efficient. So I would tend to lean toward option two, I would tend to lean toward wanting to go faster than slower and if you can find a hybrid or if you can find some way to minimize the risks that you know, you have to do all those things. But I would lean in the way of going faster because I want to minimize the risks of the things I don't know.
Sure.
And the things you can't control.
We, we did not want to, we did not want to come before you tonight without a recommendation. We, we thought that would be inappropriate, given, given our experience and knowledge and what we do. And so, but going back to the point that Mike made at the beginning, we are presenting both options in full confidence that the district can move forward with either.
Okay.
So in terms of what is, is that your last slide, Mike? When are we being asked to vote on a recommendation?
No, we were, we were actually looking for guidance on this and I think what the next step would be, and I'm going to look to my colleagues here to give me, give me out this, is given, given some of the feedback we've got, which has been fairly specific about what direction you want us to head, and I think our next step is to try to craft something, craft a phasing of this timeline, which we could then come back and present to you with some dollars associated with it. So whether it's, you know, it's a hybrid, it's probably going to be, it's probably not going to be either option one or option two as, as related, as you've seen it today, but given the feedback, I think you've given us some other food for thought in how we might tinker with, with both options and come up with something that comes closer to satisfying all the requirements, minimizing the risk while at the same time accelerating the timetable.
I just, I just wanted to request that we will have that information if there's also the, you know, there are the considerations here of like summer school displacement and things like that. So some thought to when those, you know, who's working on that, how those plans are going to be laid out so that our community in-house and broader community has an idea of when things will happen, the sooner that we can start communicating that. And I think to the town hall or however we want to approach this, that the, when I first read about input, I was, I didn't know what that meant, it was like, well, what are you going to do with, I mean, if someone says no, there's a whole group that says that classroom should be over here and you don't know how to design, I mean, I just wonder what this input would be used for, given that we've already done all that. I think informational in terms of, you know, people being able to see the progress and we, you know, the same way we did with the Imagine process and ask questions, but I think input may be a dangerous word. Just, because I saw, I was like, oh my, what does that look like?
So a point of clarification from the board, we've heard Mr. Barr's statement, we've heard Mr. Isley's statement. I would be in a better place, I believe, just going forward, because sometimes we hear one statement and we run with that if any other board members are willing to just say the kind of direction that we're.
I agree with Craig and Matt and that's what I thought I said.
I just went to. Ralph?
I'm a real conservative guy of that nature, believe it or not. So I'm a measure twice, cut once kind of guy. And we, we went through a number of capital projects in my prior experience that the more time turned up to be the better approach. All that said, this is a different situation. I think since our experts said they could do either, I would prefer them doing option two.
My position is that it is option two, but the thing that concerns me when we do this and the board gives direction in an area that we are not experts in, is that that not be taken as, with a rigid sense because we are expecting that your expertise, you know, even if it is, well, here's option two, we heard you say, so we'll do all the summer work in two years instead of four. If that doesn't make sense, then that has to be communicated and you lay out what is, you know, not just what we say we want and try to make it work, but what's feasible so that we continue to have a dialogue about it so that none of us end up like what happened. But that we continue to dialogue and that what we're saying in terms of option two, but that it is not to the letter without your expertise being a part of that.
Absolutely, no, I appreciate that. Just wanted to get a context so that when we meet, we can say this is what we've heard and that kind of helps us come back with what's doable, trying to be all aspects of what was presented to them.
Because sometimes, you know, like any other body or configuration of people, sometimes the answer is no, but it can't be, well, the board said, because that is a horrible way for us to run any process.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
You have to make whatever option you do, work with my fear level, my risk averseness. Sincerely, we're not, we're not going to put anything on the table that we can't deliver effectively, so be assured of that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Second agenda.
Presentation of the fueling intergovernmental. Making this presentation fairly, the director of purchasing and transportation and Miss Cindy Sador, chief school business official, this item is in compliance with teaching plan goal six, ladies.
This is not going to be nearly as exciting as what you just heard.
Ladies, please turn your mics on.
We'll be the judge.
And make sure you're speaking to the mics.
Okay, so the district's been purchasing its fuel for its vehicles from the village for about nine years, way before my time. They've never had official agreement in writing. They came to us back in the fall, wanted us to enter into a nay to governmental agreement with them for the purchase of the fuel. The IGA calls for a 21 cent per gallon charge to contribute to future capital projects at the village's facility, which is better than what they were asking for in the original IGA, so we decided to go with them. I did go out and look at other options, there's a program called WEX, but it's still, it didn't work out as cheap as the village did. And then, yeah, and I am going to use the WEX program for when, like, people go out of town and they have a vehicle because they won't have to pay tax on that, so that will save some money. But I do believe that the village cost is going to still save us money. It's, it's a good IGA, we've looked, I looked at it, the attorneys looked at it. It has an out of 30-day notice, so we'd like to bring it to the board, clear of the rules.
Okay, so our attorneys looked at it and we've gotten this a number of times at the board where we are, the, there's a prevailing party clause in this contract. That's completely not standard. And I don't know if that's a position that this board has taken, that we're going to go against the American rule where each party pays its own attorney's fees because that puts some pressure on people to be reasonable in a cooperative settlement. And, and so I'm not a fan of prevailing party clauses, quite frankly, at number one. Number two, if you're going to have one, you have to define who the prevailing party is. Because if, let's say there's a hundred dollars at stake, I sue you for a hundred dollars and I get 25, did I prevail or did you? Right? So it's usually defined as the party that gets the greater relief based on the claim made. So I, I don't like that. And I don't like the provision in the contract that says that their fee, that they never got before, but now they get, is subject to change at their whim. Why? I mean, if they're going to sign an agreement, they should live with whatever fee they're charging us, I would think. And there's nothing that covers like if they bill us improperly or charge us improperly or whatever, there's nothing on that. So I'm just saying, if our attorneys looked at this, can I talk to our attorneys about what they should be looking for in a contract? Because our, our basic contracts, and I've got these comments about a couple of the other things, contracts we have in here, are sloppy and they contain non-standard provisions, honestly.
What I would suggest that, that we do then is that you sit with myself, Miss Sador and discuss, share your concerns that way and then we follow up accordingly.
And then I just have a question, it's, can anyone tell me what this clause means? The district releases the village.
Which one?
It's number eight. The district releases the village from liability to persons or property resulting from directly or indirectly any use of fuel purchased from the village.
That has to do with being on site at the fueling facility.
That's not what this says. Any use of fuel. I, I can tell you that I've read this a million times, I have no idea what it means. The plain English language of it has no meaning. From a legal liability standpoint, it's weird to have a clause like that in a contract and to have our lawyers have looked at it and said, oh yeah, that's fine. I'm just saying.
You said earlier, and I didn't know if I heard you right, that part of the fee goes towards their building fund? What does that mean?
No, it's to, it's to maintain the fueling station. That's what the 21 cents per gallon is for. They have the vehicles in and out and they have to make, make, in fact, they just replace all the pumps, they have to maintain the asphalt.
And so this is a new agreement because prior, we just had a local agreement with them?
I believe so, yeah. I think we don't have, we had no contract that I could find.
And did any of the other governing bodies have a contract with them?
They did not. But they did, all of them that were offered it, the park district, the township, the library have all signed and then District 97, I believe is going at this moment.
That's a little scary.
I, I have Ralph's points about, I will bring them up. Well, and not only that, the fact that this is something that is brand new and we're accepting it, it feels uncomfortable here and everyone else has already done it, so we're going to do it, too, making sure it is in our best interest and that, you know, and that it's spelled out, that, you know, with the future capital projects, that it is for that building or just, you know, for that facility.
Well, it's, it's not a percentage, they initially wanted a percentage and that was when we were not going to agree to it. They wanted a percentage of, of the capital projects according to how many vehicles we used and that was not going to happen.
This is a process that's been going on back and forth for.
Since, since.
Since October. Since, yeah. And I think we were pushing and everybody else signed. I think that's what was meant by that. And we were still kind of going back and forth. But I do know, I've tried to capture the questions that we've heard and prior to coming back next week, we can look into all those things. If you'll send us any other questions that you have.
I have just one more question, which is really a question for the village, not for us tonight. So I'm curious to know how they arrived at 21 cents per gallon. You know, I don't know what the math looks like on that, and I'm not sure what maintenance they're referring to, but it seems to me like if every single gallon is taxed 21 cents from every vehicle that's purchasing from them, that seems to me like it far exceeds whatever maintenance costs they might have, especially if they just really replace the pumps. Because I would assume that's their major cost. So I, I'm just curious what their explanation of that would be.
Okay.
And I would like to make curious stronger, that we need that information to be able to make an informed decision.
And the number of gallons that we bought in 2018, the 21 cents was up to, you know, $1,500 as opposed to, say, they did a $200,000 project and they wanted sex per ton. Because that's what it initially was, so... But that doesn't mean that we have to enter into a policy.
No, just, it's, it's just being informed.
Yeah, absolutely, absolutely. Question?
The next item is the...
Thank you.
Thank you. The presentation is a master agreement for construction manager. Making this presentation is Mr. Jeff Burgman, Director of Construction, Mr. Fred Prue, Director of Buildings and Grounds, and Mike Curriesso, Chief Operations Officer. This item is for information only. It's right now to review and recommend for approval at the special board meeting after this meeting. This is in compliance with Goal Six of Strategic Plan and District Policy 2:170 and 4:150.
So this is, as I mentioned in the prior presentation, really the master agreement with the district and our construction following on the, really, the need of the fees and so forth. We come in a work authorization, did I say that right? And then we had to wait on that to see the direction in which we were going to go. And now that we have that, we will be coming back in September with that, with the fees and the costs for that phase of the project. So are there any questions about the master agreement?
I've just got a couple.
Sure.
And they're in section 226 on contingencies. The being responsible for the cost of work not included in the final cost deviant budget but arguably inferable from the construction documents? Yeah, no. That, that's, that's a little too wide open. I would, I would prefer that not be in there. That's the rule subclause C. And subclause D, cost of leading work of a defaulted or bankrupt subcontractor in excess of the subcontractor price. I'm assuming you guys are picking the subcontractor? Who's picking the subs?
So the process will follow the public procurement process. So all of the subcontractor components will be publicly bid and then publicly opened. And then the board actually will approve them over responsive bidder and then assign them back to us. So we have to follow that state procurement code and we'll publicly bid all that work with multiple vendors and then present that to the board.
Let me pick someone that goes VK. We have to correct us. I'm okay with that one, but the inferable cost one?
In the other, and with that, a performance of aim upon is a requirement of the public procurement process. That will protect you from that. So there's actually safeguards in there with...
On the bond, you know, for that, right.
And then, and the contingency component, this is a cost-plus contract. You will control the contingency. Contingency won't be expended unless you approve that property. So that...
Yeah, but cost inferable. Can we just take that clause out? It was added in. It wasn't part of the standard contract. This was redlined, added in.
You know, Mike, and it, I think if board members feel that they want to oppose that, I think it's just handing that back to your legal firm and then representing it to us and you can evaluate that. So those suggestions, I think you just process through.
Sure.
Your legal firm and then...
Ralph, can you tell me the, the section again? I'm not sure I got it right.
2.2.6, subclause C. The D, we can live with D. Because we're picking the subcontractors. It's the other day.
I just want to caution us when we're saying we, because I caught myself earlier and had to say I can only speak with Jackwood. And just for all of us, I want to make sure that what you're hearing is the consensus of the board, whether it's striking language or a different, you know... So I think that is getting information about that. And then Joyland will be able to, you know, communicate with the board and then we'll be able to, to get that information. So I don't want you leaving tonight thinking that...
No, I'd recommend that you process that back through your legal firm that represents you, and then you'll share that with us. Someone will come through and create that.
Craig, you bet. That's one hit.
No, right.
Well, I'm always kind of stretching. Real quick, clarifying. So is it next month and we'll start seeing the actual dollar figures, right? That's why I kept, I love numbers, right? A lot of letters, a lot of formulae being applied. So, okay. All right, just make sure it was...
We'll make sure we have some formulae in there for...
Formula, right? Okay, thank you.
Other, other questions, interns?
So tonight is our vote on approving this contract.
Yes, we're coming back to the special board.
If you're going to offer some recommended change, then you might need to carry it over because if that change gets implemented, you might have your legal counsel delay on that before using it.
We'll pull it in there some back.
Yeah, we can, we've got the regular board meeting. 20 seconds, yeah, we'll come back for that. Thank you.
We have to take a four-minute break.
I am too.
Okay, let's get this... Okay, our next item is Item D. Presentation of College Board's School-wide PSAT statewide testing. Meeting the presentation is Crystal Jones, Coordinator of Resettlement Research, and Greg Johnson, Associate Superintendent. This item is for review and recommend for the approval. We'll be bringing it back at the August 22nd Regular Board of Education meeting. This is in compliance with Strategic Plan Goal Four, Strategy Three, Goal One, and District Policy 6:340.
Good evening. I'm presenting the College Board's quote for the PSAT testing for fall. School-wide, we'll be covering ninth grade, 10th grade, and 11th grade. It also includes our placement testing that we use for eighth-grade students to make as a part of our course recommendation process. School-wide PSAT testing will be taking place on Wednesday, October 16th. And the eighth-grade placement testing will be taking place on October 12th and October 19th, which are both Saturdays. We do expect the results back in December, at which time we will do some analysis with various teams. And then, in accordance to our data awareness framework, we'll present those out to our key stakeholders. And I am asking that the board, the committee of the whole side, review this quote and move it forward to the August 22nd Board meeting for approval.
Any questions? I'll let you first, Mr. Chandler.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That's how the next few items go. The next item is the presentation of the Secure Tax Contract. Coming forth to... So I believe we need to go to the next one and come back. The next item is the presentation of the contract for the educational consultant, Lincoln Chandler. No, who doesn't do...
You lost your place.
Should have stayed up here.
That's why that grin didn't work.
Yeah, that was a mistake. Okay, as...
Making this presentation is Mr. Gregory Johnson, Associate Superintendent.
Let's all give him a warm up.
We will be requesting the approval of the contractual agreement with Chandler Decision Services LLC at the August 22nd Board meeting. This item is in compliance with Strategic Plan Goals 1, 2, 3, and 4 and Board Policy 4:60.
Thank you, Dr. Curriesso.
Okay, as you can see, this is the contract to continue our services with Dr. Chandler. He is, he's been a collaborator of ours for several years now, most recently working with us on CCB and helping us with data analysis for our PSS intervention reports as well as providing guidance for us regarding our ESUP program evaluation that you saw last year and a few other areas here and there. So the contract is presented for your review and approval at the regular board meeting. Next person.
So did this one go through legal?
This is a continuation of contracts that we haven't, hasn't had an approval. It had an option. This exact one has not.
This exact one has not. That's good because in, in infringement clause, I wish to read the language, the consultant warrants that not bird party, B-I-R-D. Probably doesn't create any kind of legal obligation. It, there's no, it says that the consultant's going to, going to be paid $150 an hour or $30,000. How does he bill us? It doesn't say. Who does he bill? How do we check his time? Has there been a procedure? All that's left open. None of that's in here. It's got a clause on taxes and benefits, subparagraph E and 1, that creates obligations for the district that I don't think we intend to take. I don't think it was even meant to do that. I think it was meant to be exculpatory. But it is so poorly drafted, it actually works the other way. So I would take that out. And the standard clause in independent contractor agreement is that the independent contractor is taking all their money gross and they have sole responsibility for paying any taxes associated therewith. We, as a district, have no responsibility for any taxes. And in fact, the consultant would indemnify us from that. This clause is really inappropriate. It should be out of here. Has the prevailing party language in it? So, and one other thing, he's a... I could give you a lot of this. It's, it's also, there's a lot of other comments. I'm not going to go through them all. I'll be happy to sit down and talk. I can't imagine this went through legal, though. I, I can't imagine that it did. If we retain an independent contractor that's doing work-for-hire for the district where we're going to own the end product, it really needs to be specific intellectual property assignment on a work-for-hire basis. Because the way copyright laws work, even if we hire you, if you're an independent contractor and you create it for us, you own the copyright unless you assign it to us in writing and very specifically. And there is, I brought a standard agreement that I use as a work-for-hire basis with me that, you know, I'll give to you later that has the appropriate transfer language. But while Lincoln is great, and I loved working with him, Lincoln's contract is a hot mess. And, and so we should substantially revise this contract to, to make it something that's legally sound and doesn't create untold potential liability for the district, I think.
We can take your suggestions into consideration on legal. With regards to the process, the management aspect, which is why it's not in there, because it's in the management aspect of it. Mr. Chandler turns at the time in effort law that is reviewed prior to approving any invoices that he turns in.
This doesn't even have an invoice process. It says what he's going to get paid, but it's not saying how we verify he earned it or how he submits invoice. I mean, that's a standard contract 101 when you hire an independent contractor. Contractors on an hourly basis, up to a cap. The contractor's got to submit invoices that are substantiated by the time spent and to submit them to a designated person. None of that's, none of that's in here. It says he's going to be paid $150 an hour or he's going to be paid $30,000. And he can even submit a claim for more than, and that we could say yes or no to, which is kind of an odd thing. So it, it just, it just has a lot of stuff in there that is really not standard in an independent contractor relationship. And so I, and I really don't think that this ones were illegal. It's got typos everywhere. The bird thing was just one. There are, there are numerous other instances. And those create late ambiguities in the contract. You don't want late ambiguities because then you don't know what the contracts are. So I just think, I just think that our, my general impression is our legal due diligence needs to be up a little on these contract reviews. And we, as a board, maybe should come up with a board policy as a directive to our legal counsel on things like whether or not we will, as a board, think it's wise to accept prevailing party clause in a contract. Because some of our contracts have had them, some don't. None of them define a prevailing party, you know. Those kinds of things, I think we should probably down the road take a board position on. But right now, what I'm seeing in a lot of our contracts is a lot of typographical errors, a lot of inappropriate clauses, a lot of ambiguity, and that's not good.
So I will, from what I'm hearing, that we will, you have suggestions...
Yeah.
Of a template that can be used and that, that can be given to Joyland. And, and then we will have this for review and we will push this one to the 22nd.
Yeah, and given where we are, we'll take a look at that review.
Until the 22nd.
Oh, yeah, we're not, yeah. So we have time.
But to all the points, I think, just making sure that Dr. Chandler knows where he stands to in terms of making sure that he gets a look at it as well.
Oh, it's in the first.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, now. The presentation of the Secure Tax Contract. Making the presentation is Mike Curriesso.
I'm my apologies for not being present the first time I was called.
So is Dave joining you?
Dave's not joining.
The next, the recommendation is that the committee review and recommend the contract renewal of Secure Tax moved forward during the August 22nd Board meeting. This item is in compliance with Strategic Plan Goal Six and Board Policy 4:170 and 4:150.
Thank you, Dr. Curriesso. Secure Tax provides us supplemental coverage for our campus safety staff. They, they do our third shift coverage. And we have used them for a number of years. I, the delay in getting this to you is we didn't get it from them until mid-June. And we realized we had been working with that for more than five years. So we went out to try to get competitive bids. And we found at that point, because we're such a small fish in this, in this pond, only one vendor besides Secure Tax even bothered responding to us. They were higher than Secure Tax, but the others didn't even bother returning our calls. So, and the vendor that did respond said that, that, you know, they basically take on something this small. All that to say, we're very, Secure Tax is asking for a price increase due to the Cook Home decrease in the minimum wage. And that's what they're passing through to us. And budget for last year was about $55,000. We're asking for about $61,000 to incorporate that increase in the contract amendment. So we were actually looking for the committee of the whole to recommend approval at the Board of Education at the 22nd. Questions?
I just have a real quick one, if I could. The, so by not hiring an individual to cover all this, this essentially helps us probably reduce long-term costs associated with... reduce long-term costs associated with healthcare and so on.
Yeah, when we looked at our staffing and campus safety, we've been, we've hired on the assistant director, I told the board we'd do a whole staffing study, we basically looked at this. What Security Tax provides us is they cover all of the shifts that no one wants, they do holiday coverage for us, so it's actually a nice augmentation, it's a nice augmentation to our existing staff.
And those are times that we often keep the overtime anyway.
Oh, absolutely. Yeah, so this is a very cost-effective way we've been working, at these small shrunk up years, and they're doing that job. Yes.
For getting anything in here, but I don't remember reading it, are they utilized only during times the building is closed? Or are students present when they're also here?
Typically, when the building is closed. I can't say that that's 100%, it's probably about a 99%.
I think we may have used them for additional support at home.
Yes.
Just wondering, because I wanna make sure that they're also versed in our policies around equity, and trained on how to interact with their students and their parents.
One of the things that we now have, thanks to the board, is we now have a supervisor position who now is responsible, with that additional managerial response, we can provide that training, make sure they reach our expectations in terms of how we do interact with our student population. So, good point.
So, is that standard procedure, that all of the security staff gets that, even this?
Well, it's just, we didn't have that procedure because we already had the management, but yes, it was gotten more ad hoc, but now there'll be managerial, well, there was before, he had 33 people plus this person, so the reality is...
Sorry, one other thing, just because historically we've had this issue, I suggest that we also make sure we're having conversations with them around what to do if police want to come onto the premises, or ICE wants to come, you know, how to sort of handle those situations as well, even though students aren't here, you never know. And I would hate for something to happen that is not in keeping with our expectations as a district.
It's a great point, I'll make sure that happens.
And we do have procedures already that outline all those things?
Not necessarily, I have to double check. I don't think, not that I've seen that are specific to that.
We do for ICE.
We do for ICE.
Right, we did it when we became a welcoming school community.
But the police?
Right, but the police is...
The Better Bros. last year, right? Was it last year when we had an issue?
Yeah.
So, I'm assuming that there, I'm making an assumption that there are procedures, but if there aren't, certainly we should look at that.
Got you.
And do they go through background check?
Yes, yes.
Parents technical. They don't bother you.
Anything else? Thank you.
I'm just scratching my back.
Thank you. The next presentation is the contract renewal of the contract and approval of funds for cosmetology and barber program. Making this presentation is Mr. Greg Johnson, Associate Superintendent. And this item will be asking for approval for the contract with Miss Roberts Beauty Academy and the associated funding, and presented for both programs, that's including the barber program, at the special board meeting following the committee, the whole. This item is in compliance with Board Goal 4 and District Policy 6.210.
Okay, this is the third year that we've had students express interest in the cosmetology program. The second year, we've had students express interest in the barber academy program. For new board members, two years ago, when we first started this program, it began with only three students who were interested in the cosmetology program, and it has grown since then to something that has been very well received by our students, and has, for at least a number of students every year, a few students each year, I should say, spurred them on to continue to get their industry certification, so that they can be licensed beauticians or barbers. And so, this, there are two things that are being asked for approval here. First is the contract with the cosmetology program. It was a two-year contract when we first looked into this two years ago, and it's asking for funding for that contract for this current school year, as well as for funding for the barber academy for this current school year, in the second year of that contract. So, with that said, I'll open it up.
Questions? So, bring it forward. At the special.
At the special.
Thank you.
The next item is... And the presentation of the tentative budget. Do you need the projector?
Yes, please.
Making this presentation is Miss Cindy Sidore, Chief School Business Official, Miss Lynn Beck, and Amanda...
Alyssa.
Alyssa.
Afana.
Afana. And this item is in compliance with Strategic Plan Goal 6 and Board Policy 4.10. There's a recommendation that the fiscal year 2020 tentative budget move forward to the board at the September 26 Board of Education meeting, Dr. Johnson.
Thank you, Dr. Gregory Adams. Thank you, Dr. Gregory Adams. So, we worked on our...
Project works.
So, we worked on tentative budget for 2020, and we had presented preliminary budget back in May of 2019. When we looked at the budgeted revenues versus the preliminary to the tentative, we had some changes that, at the beginning, one, we tightened up everything when we start working on our slot. The first one, when we were working on the real estate taxes, one, we know we had 5.8 abatement that would happen in this fiscal year. We also have the fact that we have 55% of what we would receive in our taxes, so that dropped us down to the tentative budget of $59 million. The other is, we have the local revenue, and from the local revenue, we are going to receive a final payment in the tip surplus of 1.4 million. So, this will be the very last time we're actually going to receive the surplus on that. We have the evidence-based funding, which is EDF, and then general state aid is GSA. We are going, we received a $4,000 increase in that, so we're gonna receive 2,455,000. And then the other is, we did receive, and we approved the property tax relief grant, so we're gonna receive 3,700 other aid. We had some of the other aid, and we didn't budget in the CTE grants in this, so now we have it budgeted in there. And then the very last one, with federal grants, and with federal grants, Title 1, Title 2 came down some, and also 2, they were saying, no, we're gonna be funding it, 10% less than we have been in the past. On the next, on the next slide, this is just the...
Yeah, just got a quick question on the surplus. So, this is the last year of getting the 1.4 million in surplus revenue?
Correct, this is for the tech.
Right. So, next year, in our operating revenues, we could expect to see a decline?
No, you would see, what's gonna happen is, we're gonna receive the new property tax, that will be on the levy, so we're gonna have an actual increase in our real estate taxes for next year, but that will be a shifting from the municipality that was receiving it to actually the district, so there is no increase for the tax. And we do have that on another slide, where we'll explain this a few slides later. So, for our breakdown, looking at the, just putting it into a pie chart, it was, we're receiving 76% is our real estate taxes, we receive 10% of local, evidence-based funding is 3%, property tax relief grant is 5%, other state aid is 2%, and federal is 4%. So, now what we have is the budgeted expenditures for all funds. We have, and looking at preliminary budget, we're basically the tentative, so I'm comparing that to May. What we have there is, we have some differences in tightening up again the budget, when we're looking at, we go back in, we look at where everybody's salaries are actually falling, and the same with benefits. So, both of those actually tighten up, and we know exactly what's, is gonna be spent at least at the beginning of the year when we're doing this budget. So, we had, for the tentative, we have 48 million in salaries, benefits, we have 11 million. Part of the 11 million is that is also to the fact that IMRF has an increase of 1.8%, which is, goes into effect in January. IMRF and, our IMRF goes in in January, so it's on the half-year, and so does our rate for our insurance. So, we have to estimate a little bit while we're doing something, because, or while we're doing this projection, because of the fact that it's in a half-year, it's not quite in the beginning, like teachers, TRS, and this, we know exactly what those rates are for that whole fiscal year. Purchase services had gone up some, and we had a, we had special transportation costs that increased us. We had the capital outlay, capital outlay is planning for the Imagine project starting, and we put it in here, we have 6.3 million dollars for the capital outlay on top of our 4 million that we also have for just general buildings. And then, and the one thing that we don't have, we don't have any debt service for this whole district, which is great. Our breakdown on the five items is, we have 53% of salaries, 13% of benefits, purchase services is 9%, we have the supplies and materials, 5%, capital outlay, 13, and out-of-district tuition, and other is 7%. And the next slide would be...
Can I just ask Cindy a question? Sure. On the budgeting expenditures table?
Sure.
The out-of-district tuition, other, there's a pretty...
Oh, no, 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 you're seeing 12 million? 12 million is capital outlay, it says out-of-district tuition, and other is 5.9 million.
Okay, it's just...
Yeah, you see, I know, I said a little bit the way we tried to draw it in this slide.
All right. Yeah, I was like, why did I leave that down so much?
Oh, yeah, it's on two different lines.
Yes.
It's kinda hard to read.
Yeah.
Good question.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That would be scary, though.
Well, that's, I was like, what happened?
Alyssa is going to present the total revenues.
So, Cindy mainly focuses on what she presented in May for the preliminary budget versus what we're presenting now for our tentative budget. So, I'm going to look at the revenues and what we actually saw from last year's results versus what we're budgeting for this year. So, our main, I'm just gonna kind of walk you through what we're seeing. She kind of walked through a little bit, but I'll kind of clarify a little more. So, our other local revenues, we're expecting to go up, and that's because we are going to receive our last tip surplus payment in this winter. It'll be 1.4 million. It's about 300,000 more than we saw last year. Our, we will be getting our property tax relief grant again. It is actually going to be combined with EDF now, evidence-based funding. We just split it up for you guys to see, it's a lot easier to kind of see what the changes are then. Our other state revenue is going to be increasing 439,000, and this is due to the special education private facility tuition is going to increase, which we'll talk to you about in expenditures, so we're getting grant money for that. So, we did budget for that. And then finally, our big change in our budget for this year is our real estate taxes are actually going to decrease 6.4 million. Now, this is because of our 5.8 million abatement that we have in our 2018 tax levy. And just to kind of like clarify this, since there's such a big change, we have a couple other slides kind of walking us through the process, how we came up with our number. Okay, so for Cook County taxes, and I'm just gonna kind of briefly describe the process just to kind of clarify. Our tax bills are due on March 1st in the spring, which is estimated at 55% of prior year's levy. So, for the 2018 tax levy, it's 55% this past March that we paid, based off of 2017's levy. We just had a tax payment due, our second installment, August 1st of this year, so just a couple weeks ago, and that is actually based on our 2018 tax levy numbers. So, that's kind of like your true-up. So, whatever you didn't pay before, you pay now. So, this year is actually less, only because we have our 5.8 million abatement included in our calculation. So, what we just received in the past few weeks, we're seeing less than what we normally do because of this abatement. So, to kind of like describe it with numbers, we put together a fabric tax collections page, and let me... Wait, I bring my clipper. Okay. Okay, so, this column right here, I'm gonna try to use this mouse, I don't know if you guys can see this or not, I'm gonna explain this table. This is the amount we levy for each of these years. This is actually the amount we collected. Now, this is where it gets confusing. You levy on a calendar year, but we budget on a fiscal year. So, when we budget by fiscal year, we are actually collecting two levy years. So, this is why we kind of created this table. So, for example, our 2015 levy, we're getting collections from the spring and the fall. This calendar year total is what we actually collected for the full levy, and then this is what we collected fiscal year. So, if you follow the purple, we actually collected fiscal year 17, part of levy year 15, and levy year 16. So, if we apply that to our current levy year, which is 2018, you can kind of see the difference between your 2017 levy and your 2018 levy, we decreased. And our decrease was, this is where we abated the taxes. And we had a CPI increase, so if you net the two together, it's 4.5 million decrease. So, taking this into consideration, if we're taking our, if we're looking at our 2011 collection, so this is what we collected in March, 34.9 million. This is 55% of our 2017 levy, and that went into our FY '19 revenue. So, then we actually trued up our 2018 levy, which is what we just collected within the past couple weeks. We only collected 26.6 million, so that's our effect of our abatement. So, this is what's actually going into our FY '20 budget. And so, then, we can also estimate what we're gonna collect in the spring based on last year's levy, so in this case, it would be 2018's levy. So, 55% of our 2018 levy, we're expecting to get 32.6 million. So, that's how we came up with our budget figure. So, yes, it looks like we did decrease a lot in revenue, but that's taking into account the abatement. Does anyone have any questions on that? So, it is a little bit confusing.
That was a lovely explanation.
That was very helpful, yeah.
Thank you, and the colors helps a lot. Thank you.
Any questions? Okay. Lynn will take off our expenditures.
As we have, so sorry, normally I have a cheerleader voice, so I apologize if I'm... My part of the presentation will be discussing the tentative budget to fiscal year 19 actual figures, where in previous slides, we have done the preliminary to the tentative budget. I apologize. As we have seen earlier, pretty much our salaries stayed flat as the result of having several retirees the past school year. I believe we had 17 retirees, so our 17 new coworkers will be brought in at a lesser salary range, which offsets the increases that staff members receive too. While our benefits did show marginal, a slight increase, as Miss Cindy mentioned earlier, it is our health insurance anticipated increase. We won't know that until November, December, at renewal time, and our IMRF contributions, unlike TRS, are on the calendar year versus the fiscal year. One area that did show an increase is our purchase services, and that is much in part a realignment in expenditures as we go down the list. For fiscal year '20, our technology department will be working on improving our telephone system by installing a digital voice... by installing a digital voice over internet program. So that is the majority of our purchase service increase, which as I go down, there are other areas where they spent money last year. For instance, predominantly their purchases were in the capital outlay area. For the upcoming school year, they have reduced that by two hundred thousand dollars as well as their supply area. They reduced that budget in half because they are reallocating. Another area that saw increases are anticipating building repairs. We will be anticipating servicing, supporting our system and maintenance to keep our laptops going, to keep our projectors going, items like that. We did have an increase in IDEA grant expenditures, but while that is an expenditure increase, it is also a source of revenue. So it will be offset, and the net effect to the district is a no effect. We, going on down, in supplies, there was a slight increase of four percent. Much of that is anticipated utility increases, which is something that is outside of the control of the district. And anticipated maintenance supplies, just to keep our building going in general. And then lastly, our capital, as was touched on earlier, we are anticipating proposing of Project One of the Imagine, which is six million, three hundred thousand dollars. We are anticipating capital equipment and building capital to maintain our building in general. That is an increase of two million, seven hundred. And lastly, life safety of the five hundred thousand dollar increase. Thank you, Alyssa. Does anyone, so sorry, does anyone have any question? Thank you so very much. Cindy will be continuing with salary and benefit analysis.
So we're doing the salaries and benefit budget. I tried to do this by going to the picture of where the expenditures were at. And with administration, I broke it down just so we could see the different categories that actually fall under administration. So our total administrative cost per salaries was four point seven million. I didn't break down the rest because the slides could go on forever, and some of the titles. So I just left it in buildings, grounds, campus security, classified personnel, faculty, group service, non-affiliated, student workers. If you want to point out that the ones that do have accounts by it, those are contracts, are still negotiations. And then we broke down the stipends. These are our bigger stipends, the athletic stipends, and we have the leadership mentor stipend, and also the student activity. We have the substitutes salaries that we broke out here. SEL is also a grant, so some of that is noted, it's the same thing as a zero net effect on the budget, twenty-five thousand start, twenty-five thousand receive. And then we have others, but this is, if we bring someone in, they're going to do assessments, or they are working on a project. We have a few projects that got worked on, scholarships and stuff like that. The next slide, we have the strategic plan budget. And this is basi- What, dollar? Oh, strategic plan budget. This is basically what the executive cabinet, and I'm sorry, we changed their name, so I'm a little lost on this this year. The executive cabinet, and these are the dollar amounts that we're putting in, we're matching to our goals, to the strategies. And everybody has basically listed out what exactly the money is being spent for. We showed what the FY nineteen budget event and what the FY twenty budget is. What happened with last year, too, these were sort of separated out into different budgets. And we collapsed it this year into one budget, just so we can follow the expenditures on this, instead of having to try and figure out who has what in one budget. So this will, it was taken out of their budgets that were last year's and put into a new account number for this year.
So just so I'm clear, so after that process occurred, then we had an increase of three hundred and fifty-six thousand on top of that?
No, no.
No?
No, no, no. So what, last year what happened is everybody had it in individual budgets that they were paying from. This year, we took it out of their individual budgets, so they no longer have it in there, and now it is in the strategic plan budget only. So we have one account number that we're using for that. So if Chris had for-
Okay, and at a high level, where would have their individual budgets rolled up to?
It would have rolled up, it would have rolled up-
Still would have rolled up into purchase services?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes.
So, so there's a, that increase, that increase is embedded here for strategic plan, but are you telling me there's a decrease of that other places?
Correct, yes, yes. It was removed from their individual budgets and put into this one account number, so we can have better accounting for it in one place, instead of having, trying to figure out each budget separately. So we're using one account number.
Okay, thanks.
On our next, on our next slide, we are taking a brief look at our special education program. As we are anticipating an increase in revenues over the fiscal year nineteen budget and actuals. To highlight it, it would be our state transportation will be increasing. We anticipate will be increasing. Our Medicaid outreach and fee-for-service, that is a program that allows us to claim our staff members who assist all of our students, relative to social workers, guidance counselors, nurses. With respect to it, the expenditures, one area that there is an increase that we have mentioned before is the outside services that does reflect our private facility tuition as well as our special education transportation, whether they are transported here or anywhere else. And our private tuition and room and board, which is for our outplace students who are residential also. That expense currently is anticipated to stay the same based on student population, but is very fluid based on student population.
The other thing I just wanted to point out quickly with the slide two is the fact that prior to this, private tuition and what we're always adding together, we split this out to towards the cost, not really that. Do you want to just give you one slide that you're ready for special ed, and also the expenditure for special ed?
Thank you. And Alyssa will be continuing our presentation comparing the operating funds.
So the board wanted us to provide a look at the operating funds. So this is from the educational fund, operation and maintenance, transportation and working cash funds. There shouldn't be any surprises that we haven't already discussed, but this is just for you guys to view in a different light. And now we get to our balanced budget. Our goal for FY twenty was to have a balanced budget. And taking out our consideration for our capital project one, which we budgeted for option two, that could change depending on your guys' wishes, and our property tax relief grant, we have a balanced budget. So I'll kind of walk through how we came up with this. So we see our total decrease in revenues, and this is from our property tax abatement, which we can see through our deficit, which is five point eight million, which is amount of our property tax abatement. If you take out your capital project allotment, so six point three million for next year's work, we are at a deficit of twelve point one million. Well, the six point three million is supposed to come out of fund balance, so take that out of the equation. Our deficit is only our property tax abatement, which we were expecting. Any questions on that?
And the timing of the, the timing of the budget, tonight we are presenting-
I mean, just to be clear, though, so we don't actually have a balanced budget. We have the anticipated deficit budget, correct? Because that's how I read it, but I just want to make sure I read it right.
Right. What we were showing, what we were showing is the fact that we did make taxes back to five point eight, yes. And then we also had the six point three that we're using for fund valuations. So, yes, you're correct.
So tonight, we're making our presentation of the tentative budget for fiscal year twenty. On August twenty-third, the board meeting, we, the budget goes on display for the community, anyone to take a look at. September twenty-sixth, the next board meeting, is when the board will be making, will be approving or disapproving our budget, hopefully approving. And the approved budget then will be filed with the state of Illinois as required on September twenty-seventh, as it is required to be filed by September thirtieth.
Cindy, do we have any questions?
Any questions?
One, one, I don't know, not a quick question, but in the calculate, in the calculation of balanced budget, so this year, we received three point two million dollars in additional, in additional funding, correct?
The tax, the tax sum, the property tax, right?
Right.
Yes.
And the abatement doesn't come out till next year?
The abatement could, could-
Does it hit this year?
At last one, yes.
Okay, so the net of those two are both in this year?
Craig, I think it was three point seven million.
It is three point seven.
Yeah, it's fine, it's fine.
Yes.
Okay. No, I don't have any specific questions. I have a couple comments, but if other people have questions.
I think so.
I don't quite know how to address this. So I appreciate all this level of detail and information. This is all great, but from a board standpoint, it's not very helpful. I need to, I need the data in context. Like, how does it look over the last five years? What's our forecast? How are we doing? And the high-level numbers that you did at the end, which was overall services increased by two point six percent, and our revenue went up by two point six percent. I don't know quite how to get from here to that higher level set of simplified metrics that's going to help us make sure that we keep things on track.
Okay, so.
Go right here.
So in October, we're going to have the five-year projection that I will be sitting with Steve Dorr from Forecast Five, while we're using his, and another one, I did one, but it was a mock one I had used. But I also want to compare it against theirs to make sure that everything I have is in line.
Yeah.
And I do want to add that initially, that five-year projection was scheduled for tonight.
Correct.
And we pulled it because we wanted to make sure that we had the accurate information for Forecast Five.
Correct.
So I'm not trying to be at all negative on the construct and all the work that you put in here. I very much appreciate it, and that's great. But what I'm trying to say is from a board level and from a communication level, they need this to come up a level.
Okay.
They need it to be more about the metrics that we care about, that we try to care about the most, which is, are we driving a balanced budget? You know, are we making sure that our cost increases are in line with our revenue increases, which is what we've said as a board? Because if I get all this detail, I don't want to dig down into this detail because that's not helpful from a board standpoint.
Okay.
So I guess I'm just asking that we need to simplify it, and we need to elevate it up as we go through this process on a global basis.
I agree with Craig's, I think those are great comments, Craig. And they would be helpful for us as board members. And maybe one, one thing we could do is fund reporting more than all funds together.
Okay.
I think that that provides a clearer picture of whether or not we're on target, number one. And it'd be great if we could have some historicals in addition to the projections so that we really are looking at, you know, maybe a ten-year sequence at any time. Here's where we are, here's where we were five years ago, here, I think we're going to be in five years. And I think that would be a really helpful thing for the board by fund, as opposed to all funds.
Yeah.
And I would just say that, but I would just say that for these types of reports, as we spoke earlier about just having a template, I think, for the expectation from the board, they came up with the student activities report as well, that we, you know, as we're, Craig, some of the things that you're saying, having, making sure these questions are answered, I think we have to formalize that from a board communication as to the, you know, whether we put in our goals or superintendent goals, so that those expectations are there.
Yeah, and I know that from your standpoint and sitting in your seat, sometimes the questions here come at a very detailed level, and we're asking all these detailed questions. And, and so that gives you a message about, well, what I care about is that detail, did purchase service go up by three, you know, two percent or one percent or whatever? You know, I want to make sure we understand why things went up.
Okay.
But I really can't, from a board standpoint, it's not our job to manage that. It's our job is to manage these overall metrics, which is why I'm trying to get on it. And I agree with you.
Yeah, they'll have to clarify.
We need to clarify what those overall metrics are that we care about and what you need to report into.
So that's, that's what else.
Any other questions?
Well, I just wanted to, I did find some of this to be really helpful to understand, and so I won't see what they were, because I don't want, it's just my own preferences. But I appreciate the effort going into it, and I do, you know, agree, it's coming to the big picture over time, type of, you know, very high up view down, just so we can see beyond a year or two, and the big picture will be helpful, so, thank you.
And so, and just from a communication, somebody says, I don't think we should call this a balanced budget since it's really not. I think we should say it's an anticipated deficit to provide property tax relief, because that's the truth. And it would confuse people to look at a negative bottom line and hear that that's our definition of balance. I'm just saying.
That's a good point.
Good point for a messaging standpoint, might go over well.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
The next item is Mr. Dorr. It's the resolution authorizing preparation, placement for inspection, and publication of the FY twenty twenty tentative budget. So we're asking that the committee of the whole recommend that we approve the resolution authorizing preparation, placement for inspection, and the publication of the fiscal twenty twenty budget at the special board meeting that follows this meeting. And this item is in compliance with strategic plan goal six and board policy for volunteer.
Any questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
And the next item is the, oh, we're finished with finance. Now we move to policies for first read. In the board memo, it indicates the changes made to special policies as recommended by press. Each administrator responsible has gone through them at this point in time. Are there any questions tied to the policies for first read?
I have a couple. Not big, well, you know, I have a couple. So one is-